Before we get started, there was a garage fire across the street yesterday. And fortunately, the young children were seriously hurt. So, you've kind of got to watch the kids. They can get away from you in a heartbeat. And we don't want to see anybody hurt. So, especially the school starting up here recently, just please pay attention to what's going on around it. All right. He's called 10530. We'll call Lana by phone. Yep, gotcha. Aaron, Fred, Dan, Brad, Rob, Al, Al, Dee, Randy, Perry. All right, consent agenda, approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes, approval of the bills. There are four building permits, so we will handle those separately. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Someone?
Sorry. For a second. All right, any discussion, questions, concerns? All in favor? Consent agenda approved.
Reminder, make sure you sign the sheet with the bills and the data.
All right, building permits, we have four of them. First one is InSight Incorporated, and they are doing some more antenna work for pro-coop rain elevator. Don't know exactly what they're... They're going to be planning some antenna removal and replacement at the existing antenna facility fixed to the building at 206 Garfield. This is the elevator. Attach site plans, I think everybody's looked at it. So, is there any questions on that, concerns? To have a motion to accept that building permit?
No.
Second? All right, we have a motion and second, all in favor? All right, next one is from Kevin Kearns, 205 Walnut. He is putting on a basement stairs, outside basement stairs, so that they can access the basement easier than crawling down the hole on the inside of the house. And pretty straightforward, seven by seven by six feet in height. Oricon concrete debris bar. There will be some block out there as well. Outside opening is three by six. Estimated beginning date, the seventh. Estimated completion, end of November, if everything goes well. Anybody have a problem on this? Have a motion to accept. Motion and second, all in favor? And then, of course, attached to that is the Iowa one call. Next up is Chris Westergaard, 401 First Street. He has got a pre-constructed building, ten by ten, that he wants to move in or removed in. Any questions, concerns?
Does that require foundation?
No. Hundred and twenty square feet requires foundation. That'd be ten by twelve. Anyway, any questions?
Where's the equipment?
Um, I didn't see this.
Yeah.
It's next to the vents where the street goes up to your doorstep.
All right, so I have a motion to approve. All in favor?
Okay, last one is from me. Basically, I'm going to take out the sidewalk in front of my house. Permanently remove the sidewalk, it's two hundred and twenty-four feet of the sidewalk, estimated. Kind of want to grave it back to the soil, but I'm waiting on Sheldon to come over and take out the two ash trees in front of my house so I can backfill and grade it. Make that all good. So, I don't know exactly when I'll get started with it. And I'll just go and show them what the weather is like. So, I want to do...
You're doing just in front of your house?
In front of my house, in my shop. So, I have a motion to approve. I approve it.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
No animal permits, treasurer report, Dee.
In your packets, you should have gotten my report in printout for the balance sheet for both of March or in July and August. On both of those, I went through the Bay of Conciliation, everything appeared to be correct. Went through the CD report, noticed that in July, there was no interest earned. In August, there were two accounts to earn interest. Went through the daily transactions for both months, accounts available for both months. Reviewed the time sheets, and I reviewed the general ledger entries for the month, both months.
Any questions for Dee? Got a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
Someone?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next guy in the city clerk's office. Counsel's conference. Robert, you anything?
Do not, sir. Nope.
Dan?
Nope.
Lanny, anything? Al?
Alway. Sit down at this one.
Mayor's comments. We talked about the... We didn't put this on the agenda for action. We talked about the purchasing some property for a burn site. I've done some research, also heard some disturbing things. I've done some checking with the M.R. I've heard that there has been some dumping out there. And so, I asked the M.R., I said, "So, if that place turns out to be contaminated, who's going to be responsible?" Instead of buyer, who's responsible for cleaning it up? Secondly, we've gotten the word that there's been a bid on that property for way more than what we were prepared to offer. So, just let me know that, so we can take formal action in our next meeting and either proceed or withdraw that plan to purchase that site. We'll be talking a little bit later about 605 Elm Street, the property there. We have 806 Arthur Street. That house hasn't been lived in in a couple of years, it's fallen down. We've looked around, and we've got approval from the court, we're going to clean it up. I just want the council to consider that. They'd want to consider having our attorney go through the court system to obtain that property so we can dispose of it. It's never going to get fixed up, it's never going to get cleaned up. So, it's just food for thought at this point. Couple of months ago, we changed the process a little bit for our meetings, and we asked people to come in and fill out a form to speak. We've had two instances here where... And we also wanted detail, what do you plan to speak about? That way, if we need to do some homework, we have your answers, instead of open-ended questions that are going to last a month or more before you get a real answer. We asked for detail, and so far, two times, we have not received any detail. And going forward, if we don't get detail on these things, we're not going to do enough. Sorry. We didn't want to waste the council's time, especially when there's... And this plays into some other thing we're going to talk about tonight. A lot of innuendos, accusations, and things that are turned out to be totally baseless. And just to let people know, I have... Since we drained the pool, I have drained it seven more times. The belt, it's about three and a half, four feet of water in it. It's not coming through the sidewall, it's not coming through the plumbing for the pool, it's coming from the ground. And there's a significant problem there, and I just want to make people aware that we went through roughly, in addition to filling the pool and all the rain that we had, we went through over a hundred thousand gallons of water to keep that pool topped off. That means there's a leak going out, and there's a leak coming in. And we need to consider that in the pool's future. And I don't know where we go with that. The pool committee is going to be chewing over possible solutions. So, I just want to make sure.
Jim, could I just correct? We actually went to two hundred and nineteen thousand gallons.
I'm sorry.
Significantly more.
That's a lot of water.
Two hundred thousand should be more than.
That's a lot of water. All right, that's it from Mayor's comments. Utility reports, Perry.
Last week, I had a sanitary sewer smoke tested. To find out the main refrigeration from the storm sewer, the storm sewer was connected to the sanitary sewer. I'm going to do some more investigation on that and get that fixed. So, I want a bunch of rag water to do it. Overflush the wood station every time the second started. About that right now.
Anything else?
Next Thursday, we'll be flushing highlands. Next Thursday, I'm going to flush highlands.
Okay. And just thought, let everybody know, remind the cleanup days are fifteenth to sixteenth, eight to five. We will help out those people that don't have a vehicle or a way to bring their stuff up. But people that are able to bring their stuff up, we're not going to pick up for just... Like we used to do in the old days, with curb sign pickup for everybody. Citizens request to be on the agenda one, Sarah.
What is... What is, Sarah, my foremost, the future, that's why these guys are here. And I didn't think you needed to know more than that because it's pretty basic. What I want to say is, thank you to those of you who supported the chicken and noodle supper at the fire station on September 25th. The attendance of the leadership of Rolf was crucial for our community. Our world is made up of people who show up.
We are the sixth generation of Black families to live here. We like to ride our bikes and visit parks to play.
We love to swim in our town hall with our friends.
We are v golfers, we like to go, we go to the library every week, we are the v golfers for age group.
It's more about to see that Rolf has a bright future. We're the future citizens, we're your future firefighters and firefighters.
We are the leaders of the world.
Thank you. All right. No unfinished business? New business. Public hearing, the ordinance change. It's been proposed that we change the funding structure for the mayor and the council. Everybody should have got a spreadsheet from... That was submitted by Aaron. Really doesn't change the amount where people are being paid annually, it just changes the structure. In other words, if we have more meetings, you get paid for the month rather than the amount, the number of meetings like it is right now. Just to let people know, the last time the salaries for the council and the mayor was changed was 1997. So, it's been coming up on thirty years. Rather than take more money out of the community area, here's a different solution. Could you outline that solution for us?
First, I'm going to help change.
All right. So, for the public hearing, we have 5:45. I made a motion, I need a second.
Sir.
Dan, a second, we'll call a vote. Lana?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Dan, Brad, Rob?
Al?
Yep.
Okay. So, we're now in the public hearing. So, we'll figure out...
So, currently, under the last change that happened in 1997, city council members get paid forty dollars per meeting. So, every time we have a meeting, we get paid forty dollars. Give you an example, last year, we had twenty-seven council meetings. The city council alone got paid grand total of five thousand four hundred dollars. My idea or suggestion to change would be that we change, instead of paying us per meeting, pay us per month. So, my suggestion was, we change from paying forty dollars per meeting to paying fifty dollars per month. Any month that council member attends at least one or more meetings. In other words, if they don't attend any meetings in the month, just like now, if they don't attend the meeting, they don't get paid. If they don't attend the meeting during the month, they wouldn't get paid. If that change alone, changing to fifty dollars a month instead of forty dollars per meeting, last year would have saved us two thousand twenty-five dollars. It's not enough to pay for a fire truck, it's not enough to pay for a new ambulance, but we're working for, starting to find ways to save money that are going to be important, it's a good down the road. The other change, then, I could also suggest along with that, which would be a separate vote, is changing the mayor's salary. Currently, the mayor of Rolf gets paid a hundred and fifty dollars a month to run the everyday operations of the city. He also gets paid forty dollars per meeting. Again, last year, we had twenty-seven meetings. So, last year, if we would have gone and changed, I'm proposing, which is change him from getting a hundred and fifty dollars a month to two hundred dollars a month. And he gets that flat two hundred dollars a month, no additional for meetings. Okay? It would have saved us four hundred and five dollars last year. Again, it's not a huge amount, but it's building towards savings and getting us onto a system that's going to keep us from having tons and tons and tons and tons of meetings, which is the purpose of having meetings, which we obviously don't want. It gives us some background there, some ground to play with in terms of meetings. One of the big things that has happened since 1997, when they set the pay rate and they were looking at having twelve meetings a month, is now the state is putting requirements, we have to have three sets of meetings just for a month. So, now, we've got the twelve meetings that we have normally, plus three, we're automatically fifteen every year. Last year, when hiring, things went on, or any changes, other changes come along, they add meetings. So, we want to try and, my idea is trying to get that down. The other piece on either side of this was, in the event that we were to exceed twenty-four meetings a year, which is two a month, instead of paying like we do now for a whole meeting again, we'd only pay additional twenty-five dollars for additional meetings above twenty-four. Hopefully, we won't be going clear above twenty-four again, like we did last year. That's the suggestion proposal I put forth. Any questions? This is a public hearing.
Yeah. If, when you take the responsibility, or is it a state mandate? But if you take the responsibility of having a seat on the council, can't you waive that? I mean, the individual that took it, because it's a, yes, it's an honor, yes, you, but you're speaking for the town. And to me, I don't think that, I don't know, I just don't think it's necessary that they get paid for every meeting.
So, an individual could make the choice to give back in one shape or form or another. They do have to be on the payroll, so that anything that comes back legally is protected, you know, is protected. So, you have to be part of the payroll, individual citizens, you know, on here. And many of these people do give back in one way, shape, form, or another. And they just don't make a big deal about the fact that they're giving all the money they made back, or a portion of the money they give back.
Oh, they do give it back?
Many of them, many of them do.
Okay.
I'm not going to commit to who or how much, what percentage, but many of them do.
Could you put that in the, you don't have to put who gives it back, but could you put that into some type of thing that, this is what is volunteered back? Can we define?
We could probably have, we probably...
You've got to, you've got to argue. Because it's not going to back to the city, it might be to an organization. It could be to like RBI. It's not.
Helping somebody pay for their utility bill in the winter time.
Oh.
So, a lot of things...
Well, it does explain better, you know.
But, but that's a great question, thank you.
Okay, so you're saying whether you have two meetings or four meetings a month, you're with fifty dollars a month?
Right, that would be less additional.
Okay.
Rather than right now, if we had four meetings, maybe a hundred and sixty dollars if we paid that month, which...
Okay. Does the mayor have like certain hours that he's at, like, do they have to be at City Hall? I mean...
So, no, he doesn't have set hours, he has to be here.
Okay.
Our mayor is here way more than mayors in other small cities. And I, and nobody wants to hear about Claire, because every time somebody asks me something, I reference Claire. I'll give you an idea, Claire is a third our size. Their mayor gets paid three hundred dollars a month just to run the city. Plus, she gets paid sixty dollars for every meeting she attends, whether it's city council or on behalf of the city. She's making tons of money, beaucoup money. And, you know, Jim hasn't got to pay that much, he spends way more time here.
Well, I would say now, like, if we got a mayor that has like a full-time job, like, that would not really be something that would be feasible then, because he might, they, they might be working while City Hall is supposed to be open.
The chances are, whoever we get for our next mayor, because Jim is not learning, if you're not already aware of that, whoever we get for our next mayor, probably have another job, probably won't, mayor probably won't be their full-time job.
Okay.
And what we have to pay, not be able to support a mayor is full-time, yeah. Any other questions in our public hearing? Council members? Got any questions for me? Lana, do you have any questions for me?
If there are any more questions, then I'll have a motion to come out of the public hearing. Throw a second. Eve? We'll call a vote. Al? Eve?
Aye.
Dan? Lana? Aaron?
Aye.
Back in regular session here, so... We've had our public hearing. This is a proposed ordinance change, ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Rolf, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to the mayor and the council. We have a second one for the council.
Second.
Yeah, okay. This one's for the mayor. Being enacted by the city council of the City of Rolf, Iowa, section one, section modified, section fifteen oh four of the city, the Code of Ordinances for the City of Rolf, Iowa is amended to read, salary of the mayor is two hundred dollars per month, plus twenty-five dollars per council meeting attended over twenty-four in a calendar year. The reference from the state, the Code of Iowa is section three seventy-two point thirteen, paragraph eight. Section two, severability clause, if any section, provision, or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section, provision, or part thereof, not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section three, when effective, this ordinance shall be effective January first, 2026, after its final passing approval and publication as provided by law. So, do I have a motion to approve?
Someone?
And, I need a second.
Sir.
Okay, Dan? So, I need a roll call vote on this. Al?
Yes.
Rob?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Lana?
Yes.
Aaron?
Aye.
Five ayes, no names. That's the first reading.
Just in case anyone's wondering, I didn't cover this during the public hearing. The reason it doesn't take effect till January first, 2026, the state law prohibits us from voting on any type of compensation change, either more or less during our term. So, it won't take effect until the beginning of the next term or renew the elected people on board.
All right, second part of this. For the city council, being enacted by the city council of the City of Rolf, section one, section modified. Section seventeen oh six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Rolf, Iowa is amended to read, salary of each council member is fifty dollars per month in which one or more meetings are attended. In addition, each council member is paid twenty-five dollars per council meeting attended over twenty-four in a calendar year. Again, Code of Iowa, section three seventy-two thirteen, paragraph eight. Uh, section two, severability clause, if any section, provision, or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section, provision, or part thereof, not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section three, when effective, this ordinance shall be effective January first, 2026, after its final passing approval and publication as provided by law. So, a motion to approve the above section of chapter seventeen of the City Code of Ordinances. Do I have a motion?
Someone?
Aaron? Motion by Aaron, second.
Sir.
Dan, second. We'll call a vote. Al?
Yep.
Rob?
Aye.
Dan? Lana?
Yes.
Aaron?
Aye.
All right. So, five ayes, no names, no actions. First reading is approved. All right. All right, there's been some confusion about the trick-or-treating date in times. The last meeting, the council voted to go ahead and have Trump or Treat on Saturday night, the first. Apparently, there was a lot of confusion out there, so I believe the council was prepared to just say, let's just do it all on the thirty-first, Friday night, and be done with it. That way, there's no confusion. My understanding is that at four o'clock, the library is going to have a function over there from four to five. And then, from five to seven, City Hall is going to be open. I'm not exactly sure what is going to be provided, other than the place to get warm, because it will be colder. And hand out candy and things.
Community center.
Or, I'm sorry, the community center. There's going to be, there's going to be chili, and having it be super, just like last year, by the Lions Club. The Lions Club is going to do that, okay. All right. So, you've heard it from out, what's the plan? So, you know, there's no need to go out there and freeze to death. Go out and get your candy, come up here, get something hot to eat. Have a little camaraderie. Take your kids over to the library earlier. And, of course, at seven o'clock, it's going to be dark, so kind of go home and enjoy all that candy. So, that's been the proposal, I have a motion to change that date to the, for the first.
Someone?
I have a motion, second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And I've heard that there's also going to be a function at the golf course, but I haven't been able to run that to the ground, so...
Yep, awesome, if I can speak.
What's that?
Casey and I rented out the golf...
Casey and I, um, rented out the golf course for anybody in town, any kids, whatever age, from eight to ten. And we're doing a dance out there with some snacks and soda and lemonade, and free to all kids that want to go out there and have a little dance, so.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah.
And do you want to ask that out?
Just a second, just a second.
More than welcome.
You certainly can, yeah. Yeah, we just have a little Facebook wire is also.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you, Casey. Christina, do you have something?
I just wanted to ask a question on behalf of the library, so, just to clarify, are you doing the trick-or-treat and the Trump or Treat together, or are you still doing them separately?
Yeah, yeah, if people want to bring it up near for Trump or Treat time, if they want to do their trick-or-treat at the doors, you know. People are more than welcome, turn on your porch light and hand out candy to them.
Okay, so is there no longer the, the Trump or Treat on Saturday?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just trying to clarify, because we were doing, uh, an event as well on Saturday in, in line with that, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
It's okay, we, we'll just move that around and make it now just like.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Uh, needed to discuss the tornado sirens. We had a report a month ago that this siren, uh, didn't work, looked into it, um, and then we checked it when they had the siren test on the first Monday of the month, and it worked just fine. What I wanted to bring up was that, the, I don't know how old these sirens are. There's always a possibility that they get older and parts become harder to find. So I just want to ask the council to be open to the possibility of having to go pursue a grant to get some replacements at some time. We'll continue to monitor them, make sure that they're, they're working, but, uh, you just never know. Also, wanted to consider, council to consider, uh, more frequent operation of the sirens. Some towns have a noon whistle, some towns do theirs weekly. We just do ours monthly, first Monday of the month at noon. It's set off by the, um, Sheriff's Office of the Test. So, is there any, any thought about making it more frequent?
In terms of making it more frequent, is there any charge from Oklahoma State or the Trump or Treats?
I would have to look into seeing if there's, there's an automatic feature such as the clock, the day in the clock just automatically pops up without then sending it off over there.
Which may happen. My thought would be we should go back to testing it once a week. I mean, we, we may not need it when the snowflakes are flying, it'd sure be nice to have when, uh, spring rolls are out, because we never know how soon that. NASA's secure weather's been hit, or how long it's gonna last. We, we're pretty lucky this year, I remember a couple years back, December fifteenth, and I was sitting in my basement and sirens were blowing. I, I think we should have them tested weekly, that's my thought.
I think so, I'd, I'd agree with that.
We used to do it, didn't we, on Saturday?
On Saturday, yeah.
Okay. Say again, Lana?
Sorry.
Okay. Alright. Um, so, Al, you have any thoughts on that?
No.
I, I couldn't hear you.
I know it.
Rob?
I think, just a second.
Casey? If there's no cost, why couldn't we just have noon siren every day?
If, if, that's possible, if you're gonna just suggest it weekly.
Just, just a suggestion, I guess.
He said noon every day.
Why not?
Yeah, we know when to eat.
Right.
You know, back in the days when I was little and I was sitting at.
You were little?
Yeah. At the cattle station pushing that button for those people coming up to eat the self-serve pump, they used to run it here every day. I know I'm not the only one that's showing different memories of that.
Well, think about it.
Clover did it.
It used to be that way, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that would be basically Monday through Saturday, with somebody whistling.
No, somebody whistled because everybody was in church.
Yeah.
I would move that we.
I'm open to anything.
We confirm if, if there's a cost, and if not, uh, what options might be available to us, and bring it back for the next meetings, and then move forward with even doing. But find out what options.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved. Discuss fire truck next steps, um, this kind of goes along with what we're gonna be covering here. We found that the FEMA is going to, likely going to open up, um, a grant process for assistance to firefighters. And in that, um, you can put in grant requests for equipment, um, and also support equipment. Required here, you know, your boots, your helmets, your turnout gear, all that stuff. And so, we've looked into it, we've found that there's a grant writer in Minnesota who has a long history of success getting grants from FEMA. Quite complicated, and, um, so we would like to pursue a grant on that. The other part of the equation here is that if we, uh, this will save the, the city about, right now, I'm looking at roughly the cost needed to buy the, the truck that, um, has been proposed, the city would still need to come up with another hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. We have, the rest of the money is available. So, going after a grant that would save us a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, we can also, um, obviously go for the, uh, Corn Belt, uh, power. They have a, um, revolving fund loan, or loan fund, as well as the, uh, State Fire Marshal's Office has one as well. Their is limited to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're, we're going to pursue all three of them. The, I did talk to our attorney, I talked to our bond attorney. They both recommended that we do not do anything until we have a conduit for the remaining, remainder of the money, which means we either have to have the grant money in hand, or we have to have an agreement by a pending institution that they, that we qualify that the money will be there before we actually place one on the order. So, um, we're gonna go forward, we hope, this is gonna be an action coming up here in the next, the next step, um, to pursue a grant through FEMA. And then we can also apply for, I'm waiting on a word from Corn Belt as to whether or not we can put the request in, but hold the money until we're sure that either that money is gonna have to be used, or we can use the FEMA money instead, or another source of money. So, um, that's kind of where we're, we're sitting at. I did talk to the salesman down at Coim, and he offered up three or four different methods, um, to pursue funding. The biggest thing about funding is if you finance anything, Iowa's laws and the federal laws are very particular on how you do that. That's at least, uh, at least loan agreement, anything like that, could, is considered financing. So if we come up with a grant, we don't have to go through all that stuff, we can just buy it outright. If we can't come up with the grant, then we need to make sure that all the workups are, are in order before we place one on order. So, that's kind of where we're at. As I mentioned. Yeah.
So, where are my firefighters? I know you're busy. Alright. This is a new message than we've had all through this process so far. We are pursuing three different things, two different loan payments now, because we know that we can do that. We've got the approval to move forward and look at those loans. Also, we're gonna pursue a grant. Obviously, the best option would be if we get the grant, but we want to make sure that we have something else to fall back on, so if we don't get that grant, we can still move this forward. This, this is positive ground, and I know it sounds like we haven't gone very far, but we have. We know we can go ahead and get the loans, now we're gonna pursue those loans and find out, you know, how can we hold those off, once we get approval for those, or what have you. And at the same time, we're moving forward with this grant. Okay? So that, that is new information. I'll take one quick. Yep?
This has been a four to six month process already.
Yep. Yep, you're absolutely right.
How many more months is it gonna be?
So. We're gonna move forward, we're getting, making sure we got the loan capability, and we're gonna move forward with the grant at the same time. The grant may come in in a couple months, the grant may take a year to come in, but we're gonna try, get all these ducks in a row so that we know we can positively move forward. Hopefully, what will happen is if the grant comes in, and we don't have to worry about the loans, and, and you just tell them we don't need them. But we're moving, moving forward here.
Okay, one other thing to mention is that, if you secure loans and you order a truck, and you pay, have to pay any money upfront, and you receive the grant, you have to return the grant, you cannot backfill payments with the grant money. So, now, the, um, matching funds requirement for the grant are about five percent, which is about eighty-six hundred dollars. For the state, uh, there is a, uh, one percent matching with a hundred and fifty thousand, which is about fifteen hundred. And then with Corn Belt, I believe it is, um, a, uh, ten percent.
Three.
Matching. Which would be about sixteen thousand. That's kind of where we're at. Yes, it has taken, taken a while, but we want to make sure that we're doing this right. I, I can't put the city at risk. I don't believe any of the council members want to put the city at risk. We hear all sorts of stories from other, we don't know how, how true they are, uh, well, they just went and ordered one and got it. They did this, that, we don't know the background on these things.
I have a question.
I have to consult, just a second, I have to consult with our attorney, and in these cases, he refers us to our bond attorney. And so our bond attorney, he said, if you mess up, you are gonna be in deep trouble, so we don't want to mess up.
Question, how much is the grant write-off cost?
We're gonna cover that here, next step. So that's where we are. So, we'll move to the next, uh, next item, which is approved, the grant writing contract. The two grants we asked for the information for, um, the, uh, together, the total cost is, and she's cutting this deal here, is twenty-four hundred dollars. I've already given her all the information that she needs to write the grant, she hasn't asked for anything in addition. I thank the fire department for pulling together, uh, their equipment need. We have two grants for now, one for equipment, one going for the truck. And so, twenty-four hundred dollars is what we're looking at. Based on what I see from her, her website, her Facebook, and other things that I've read, she is very, very successful. There's a litany of fire departments on the border of Iowa and Minnesota that have, and even down at Claire have received, um, grants. So, all we can do is ask, put our paperwork in, and see what they say. You know, I can, all they can say is no, or try again next year.
She can run both of the grants?
Yes. And FEMA has been doing, and there's no guarantee they will do it with this election, the last couple of years FEMA has also been, not only when they award the grant, the grant might, and they're cutting a separate check to reimburse the grant writer costs. So that's positive too. I got this information, uh, in terms of who the grant writer is, I got that information from the fire departments down in Claire, and they've had success down there. Three times in the last seven years. And some of the fire departments had, uh, grants written by this lady, where they've been successful, so she's done some good stuff for us. And one of the reasons we're also looking to be going with equipment in terms of just, not just the truck, but going with the equipment. She sort of preface more information that you can put out there in terms of what you're looking for, and lets them see a bigger picture. This is a small community, we're looking for a nice little chunk of a fire truck, but we're not asking for the entire four hundred thousand dollars from the fire truck. We're also looking for equipment stuff, we need some help there. It, it lets them know that we're here, there's a need, and, and we're not just begging them to hand us all their money from FEMA. So she said that has been a good thing for her in the past writing these, because it shows there's a real need there. The other thing, um, we found, I found out about this lady, she only takes on a handful of contacts or, or groups a year to write for. Because the process involved, right, contracts, and then once the grant gets opened up, getting the paperwork pursued, making sure everything, all the eyes are down, the t's are crossed, watching for any feedback FEMA wants, to make sure that we get answers done right away. So she only takes on a certain handful, and she's willing to keep this open to us, but we need to let her know for certain, you know, tomorrow or Wednesday that, hey, we're going forward with you, and we're gonna get you a check. So, um, I'm very confident with all the success in Iowa that she's had, because she was up in Minnesota and works with the fire department up there, and and does her grant writing and stuff up there, but she was very open hearing from Iowa, and, and very excited, and, um, I guess one of the other things that impressed me, my first reach out to her to even see if she had any spots available was at almost six o'clock at night. Sent her an email, it, it was not even twenty minutes, she responded back, yes, I am, you know, here's some basic information. Then circle back to me tomorrow if you've read this, you know, so she's very responsive and on top of things too, so, not everybody in this day and age is.
So, any questions from the council on that? Alright, so I have a motion to go ahead and approve, um, engaging, paying the grant writer for these two grants. Hold on.
We can get a motion?
Hold on a second?
Aye.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Alright, we need to set the meet and greet for the election candidates. Everybody got an idea of the day?
Do you have a calendar for the call? Do we have any working on it? No, okay, nothing new, watch out. I want like Wednesday the thirtieth, so we're close to the elections, so people, so there's not people time to think about what all the candidates had to say, so it's gonna be a motion this morning.
Thursday?
Thursday the thirtieth?
Any other suggestions?
Al, you're running Thursday the thirtieth?
Thursday.
You're running, Thursday, not Thursday the thirtieth?
Yeah, Thursday the thirtieth. I mean, I run. Like last year?
Alright, and.
Yeah.
Okay, all, all the candidates are running here, said, it Thursday, the thirtieth, right from this, well, I, for Wednesday, Thursday.
Thursday. Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday, the thirtieth, Thursday, the thirtieth.
What time?
October.
What time is it tomorrow evening?
What time?
Five, okay. Normally, we wait for public feedback, we have forums, but given the scenario and the situation, I got our two other candidates here, I'll argue, it's the other you guys do. Five thirty work for you guys?
Yeah.
Al?
I suppose.
When I say no, you're just gonna say yes. No, they'll go back to them and ask for a better time later back.
No, five thirty, thirty.
Jim, five thirty work for you?
I'm telling you, thirty.
Randy, five thirty work for you? Is it, I'm sure it's gonna be a longer.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, who, yeah.
A lot of people work out of town, I don't know if, oh, know that, six o'clock would probably work better for the public.
Fine, me. Al?
Sure, it's for Mr. Leaper.
Six o'clock, Ken?
Six P M is nine.
Six, alright, let's do six o'clock.
Next item is the smoke test, we've also already carried on, we've passed all that on, so, got all that information. Next item up is review of Black Hills Energy Agreement, uh, that most people know. Well, when Tony decided to move on, he had took his qualification with him. Perry has his very, very basic, um, qualification, but the process takes about a year and a half to two years to get fully qualified. So in the meantime, without that, and the, we could, um, rely on, um, folks at Gilmore City who are also not fully qualified to help us out. Um, we decided to contact Black Hills to see if they would provide a backup, um, emergency response, um, agreement, and they did. We've already voted on that, and we have that in place. They have also sent a technical services agreement to us to review, and this covers, um, basically all the qualifications. All the work, all the qualifications, which. All the work, all the qualifications were covered. The first year cost on this is proposed to be fifty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars. Paid monthly, which is about forty-three hundred dollars a month. This agreement can be terminated at any time with thirty days advance notice. So we can do this on a short-term basis or we can continue on with them. The second year, uh, the cost will go up about three percent, uh, which is about fifteen hundred dollars, I believe. And so, anyway, we need the help. We don't have anybody qualified for gas. And, uh, I don't know if this is, this agreement, if everybody should have looked it over. Should be, should be, if there's any questions, let's talk about it now.
I did not see anywhere, is there a timeline that we need to answer that?
No, not that I'm aware of. I can check with them and find out. And we can, people can chew on this too, I'll find out if there's a set date. And we can do some special meetings. Does anyone have any questions about the type of coverage that they've, they've proposed? We're not required to take this, but it certainly would cover our fix until we get fully qualified people.
Can you clarify, you talked about a week, forty-two hundred dollars or averaging forty-three hundred dollars a month?
Yeah.
But that's just using them as a backup?
No, 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 no. We, we have them as the emergency response mallet, a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. Just for emergencies. Now, they're proposing that they can do all of the qualification, qualified work for us. Um, until our guys get qualified at a minimum. And that, that agreement, uh, is customer service, it's repairs, um...
Annual reporting, right?
What's that?
Or annual reporting isn't it?
Reporting.
Just several.
Don't, don't we have to do a testing every month?
I know there's several annual reports that we need to get done, maybe to cover.
Or we...
Or we...
So, the scope of services, um, provide operations and maintenance services as specified. Audits, distribution integrity management, reporting, availability. They'll be available for questions twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Uh, cathodic protection, which means, means basically checking the lines and make sure that they're not rotting. Emergency leak response, uh, leak survey, patrolling, valve maintenance, odorization, procedure, manuals, um, damage prevention, line locating, service calls, public awareness, measurement and pressure, um, and documentation for all work performed. We'll continue our own, do our own meter reading in Dillon. One thing they did say for some other, and then the services are delineated further back in this agreement. Tells you exactly what they're gonna do in each one of these categories, I just...
So we are actually getting work for something we're paying for?
Anyway, um...
I don't currently have additional questions, but I'd like to, to, just like, look at it and you can forward if you have any.
So you might, how much time we have to respond to this?
How long, yeah, how much time we have to respond to it? I wanna give you myself and look at it, even more depth than I have, half-time, basically, I have this apartment. Revisit your next meeting?
We've actually dealt with one, uh, farm for years, they're really good to work with, just to... All right, uh, so I have a motion from Aaron to basically table this, um, and do some more research.
Tell him next meeting.
I have a second on that.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I'll contact him and let him find out that answer and... Great. People are probably aware of, uh, six oh five Elm Street. It's a house that, um, the owner started on last winter to do a lot of repairs on it. And they stopped in about the March timeframe, and I have tried to contact them, sent them letters. They're in Minneapolis, they were in Minneapolis. I've sent them letters, I've sent texts. Uh, I've contacted them through Business Resources and there's been no response. Um, I'm concerned that the people, the owners are Hispanic. Um, and they may not, may no longer be in the country. And the property, something needs to happen with the properties. As you can see, the weeds have grown up by contacting the Jordan I was about. The ability to do bush dogging. We went in and cleaned up some of the rubble, um, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done on that. So, kinda wanna bring it up to the council again, along with eight oh six Arthur Street. What do you wanna do? Do we wanna continue to monitor for a while? Um, or do we wanna take some sort of action to see if we can get tight open these properties and then, uh, work on, uh, in this case, the house has had a lot of work done to it, so it might be one of those, you could offer it up to somebody, you can finish it up and have an inexpensive hole. The other one, obviously, has gotta come down. So I'm just trying to get your idea about, uh, where we're going with this.
I just wanted to pay attention, did they put roof hard?
Yeah, the roof was done several years ago. Um, they put new windows in it, they've done a lot of the structural framework has been fixed. They put new basement walls in, um, parts of two sides, um, but still wide open. Nothing's finished on the inside and I don't know where they plan to go. I can't get a hold of them. And so, I'm concerned that it's just gonna sit there and become more derelict than it already is. Wanted them to at least come down and, and talk to us about cleaning the property up. And again, I can't get a hold of them. I've called both of the overs, uh, the phone numbers they give, and there's no response. I sent them a letter that we wrote in Spanish, um, so that they could understand where we're coming from, and still no response. We can sit on it for a while longer and, or we can take some action. It's up to you, if we can hold off for a while and see where we go with this.
No, just take some action, find out. It looks, it's just a regular crap hole. We got enough of them?
Correct me if I'm wrong, earlier, way back, if we were in communication home. It, it was not always, there was some communication, it's now it's...
Basically, when they showed up, there was communication.
Yeah, those increments turned into by them, correct?
Yeah.
In the beginning.
So, I guess the point I was trying to, now, now we've got the key radio silence, which is not what we have before.
Well, um, I can just check with our attorney and see what the likelihood or whether we, it's been vacant for a hundred and thirty-five days, that's the minimum, right? Um, before you can go forward with anything. I can just ask him, you know, what do you recommend, you hold off? See if they happen to show up for a while.
Let's revisit this the next one too.
What's that?
Let's revisit this the next one, he's wrong.
All right.
My motion.
Yeah, I have a motion to table for next.
I have a question for you on that property next to my house. Is there any way we can get some of those tree branches and pet, or can I have permission to cut the tree branches down on that six oh five Elm? That are over growing over top of my roof and stuff, on my garage, on my driveway?
Um, see, that becomes an issue where you, we gotta, I've gotta ask the question to our attorney and see if there's an issue with trespassing.
Because I've been spraying those weeds, because I can't even see back at my driveway, I'll somehow almost ran over a couple of people. And I mean, it's ridiculous. Now I've got these branches and they're obviously not gonna take care of. And they're gonna either fall in onto my car or on my roof. And it's gonna be more damage. Who am I gonna sue? The city or am I gonna sue the people who can't get touched by them?
All right, well, I, we've got a motion to table. Next meeting, I can do some research on that. Do you have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item up is we were contacted by Michelle Perry, um, with regard to her curb stop being replaced. In this whole thing, she had claimed that she had paid a deposit a number of years ago and the deposit was never returned. We have no record of the deposit, we have no, we, we don't know. She was going to check her bank, uh, statements. The reason she brings this up is the cost of the curb stop repair. She, um, made the claim that she cannot pay that, she doesn't have the money. So she was gonna look into alternative sources. My question to the council is, do we need to, um, since we have no proof of the deposit, do we just eat the cost? Basically, we go forward and make, make a response in the court of bill? And I realize that sets a, that would, if we do that and we give any relief on that, that sets a precedence. And then likely there'll be other people that make the same claims.
And, and any other time, just in back in our software, anytime a deposit was made, it's recorded, so we know it's there. And if it was paid out, it's recorded in there. We have nothing in there. We have both looked at it. We looked to see what it was, and know what it was. I mean, I, I mean...
We know any proof of it in there?
We don't know.
We don't know anything.
In my new trace of...
We have no trace.
And Michelle hasn't been getting any more bank shows?
At this time, no.
And the reason we know when the date is, because we know, you know, approximately, is because we know when the service start. So when the service started and she would have paid a deposit, there should have been a deposit. And we should have had that on the screen.
I don't think Michelle, the camera has looked at it.
I don't think we've got any documentation back about, you know, I agree.
All right, well, how much is it?
I think she said two seventy-nine, two forty-five, or two seventy-one. Seems a little low, don't we?
And that seems a little low, so we think it should be...
There should be a trail.
There should be a trail. We can't find it, or my guess is not a trail on her part or our part.
All right, so...
So, can I ask a question quick? The curb stop is a homeowner's responsibility? So I can buy a wrench and turn mine on whenever I want?
Well, the reason for the curb stop is that it shut the water off from the city.
For you guys to shut the water off, correct? Every municipal, I've worked for quite a few municipals, I guess. The reason I ask this is because every municipal that I've worked for own the curb stop. Otherwise, that gives the homeowner the right to do whatever they want with it.
Now, the homeowner can request that it shut off.
But I'm saying if you own the curb stop, why, why can't I do what I want with it?
If it affects the, the, the water service system in any way, if you do any maintenance on or anything like that, you mess it up. You're gonna, that, that affects the whole city then.
I understand that, that's why the city normally owns it.
So... Anyway, um... And just in this case, um, so when did, when did she come up with this? I mean, has it been a month that she's had time to look at the bank?
Oh, yeah, she, it's been about, I think, over two weeks.
I believe it's longer than the bank has, from file or something, it was, it's a long time.
And she doesn't have any...
I'm just saying our old city lady wasn't...
Well, there still should be a trail.
There should still be a trail for us.
I mean...
We have no...
Look what, look what crap you found that wasn't, that should have been. I'm not saying we should give her any money, I'm just saying with our past city lady.
No.
I don't wish to, I don't wish to pay any money. Unless she comes with a, a check or something saying that she did, that's a little bit sorry. So I have a motion to continue with our normal procedure, no, no special consideration.
So, motion.
On the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item up is Jeremy Slod, the curb stop builder. Could you speak to Jennifer?
Jeffrey has a little bit, I'm not sure everything on it yet. I just know that we got the bill for it, three hundred and seventy-five bucks. Kinda cost, I'm worried because as far as I'm concerned, if she wanted that curb stop, fine. But she would have to pay to cut that line off. We could have kept it inside, couldn't we?
I talked to Brandon, I said it was two seventy-five. He said he told me two seventy-five, the other day I heard, so I was figuring that out. So I talked to Jeffrey and Jennifer, he said two seventy-five.
That's it.
Right. You know, you have a faucet in there, it's unmetered, you know? So we either have to have it capped off or... We have to dig, you know, send the season, dig outside the building and cap it off. Bust a pipe for it, but it's already leaking from the, there's a person in the corner, but... Either way, people are going to worry about the curb stop.
Yeah.
Right. And if you get one, or very, I don't know, cap it.
I don't mind if they, if it's two seventy-five, they'll get a hundred and forty-five.
You told me two seventy-five.
It's really perfect.
I can move along, we, we, we're ready to move along. That's what I said to Jennifer, split the bill along. And she said she was talking to Jeremy about it.
Yeah, I think the date of the meeting, I have it. But he says, I'm gonna call two seventy-five.
Did I call him? Did I talk to him about?
Two forty-five.
The, the...
Well, give me, Perry, give me some background on this. Who made the call for the curb stop to be done?
Well, I talked to Jeffrey numerous times about, you know, if you want water in that building, you're gonna have to get a curb stop. But I said, you know, would you want some, um, groundwater to do it for you? And he said, I'll get back to you. And then he finally said, no, we don't want water in there. That's all, so we have to count it off and...
That was after the work was done?
No, it was before.
Okay.
It was just a water, one of the, garage, a spigot coming up of a meter pit. And then it continued on to the water, because those used to be one property at one time, so... There's one service line going, feeding on those.
All right, so Jennifer, she's got her curb stop, correct?
Yes, there's an original curb stop on Grant. It runs all the way up to Alabama there.
Okay, and theirs is capped off now?
Yeah, it's light from, yeah, it goes into that building and then continues on to the water.
Right.
Capped it off right outside the building, let it continue to the water. Capped it off right outside the building, let it continue to the water.
Now, both people were billed, or were...
They sent one bill, but...
They sent us the bill.
They sent you the bill, not Jennifer.
Right, but I talked to Jennifer and Jeffrey and, and Grant Roy, and I talked about, just having to split the bill between Grant and Roy.
Okay. Alright. And there was no action for us, or?
He told me two, two seventy-five, we had a lot of fish, I could come in, so just go, grab, I would be...
Action here, okay, um... Next item up is, um, we've had a number of accusations against the city, um, in the way we manage the city, the way we, um, deal with citizens. And we, we have to go through these investigations, and unfortunately, we have to have our lawyer involved to write the responses. We've got two, I won't go into the details, we've got two current cases against the city, um, that are being, uh, the response has already been written, sent back to the originator, the the people conducting the investigation, and we're just waiting on to hear back from them. This is getting to be pretty troubling, because, um, in the past, I can't say what going forward, but in the past, um, some of these things have been extremely troubling. You know, because they portray the city in a bad light, that the city is picking on people, and, and all sorts of things that just aren't true. And, uh, we try to conduct ourselves the best we possibly can under the laws, we know the ramifications that we break the law. For the city council, these two particular cases are confidential, if you need to enlighten yourselves on that, you can go in the city poll and read. We won't use any names or addresses on these, because we already know that there's so much misinformation out there that, uh, things can get turned around in the heartbeat. So, we'll go through these investigations, just wanna make a point that we're spending a lot of money to prove that we didn't do anything wrong, and, uh...
One of them was twenty-one hundred dollars so far, and that one is seventeen hundred dollars, and that's just getting it started.
Now, this, this might delight a few people who just wanna see the town burned, but should also be concerning to the other citizens in town, is that this is tax money that could be better spent, and other things, um, and this is basically an abuse. I hope that when we are vindicated, that, um, the people are warned clearly that this kind of thing is just not, it's not a good thing. Alright, um, that's pretty much it, we've got a couple of, we've got a case, actually, in court, um, pending. Got a court case for about nine, uh, seven properties in November, and we've got some pending cases coming up, and this is all from these issues in Vegas. Don't quite understand why you just can't pick your stuff up, it's simple as that.
Where'd you send, where'd you send, as far as getting some of those money back that's been out there for?
There've been letters sent to all of the people so far, that's my understanding, and some of the people have gone to court, paid their clients.
Everyone that's been out there since two thousand sixteen, it's been taken care of?
What's that?
The ones that have been out there last week, and brought up in two thousand sixteen, it's been taken care of?
Yeah, no, they haven't been taken care of yet.
And we're paying him, in this one, it was four thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Yeah. Well, I guess the people overall are gonna have to decide, what's, what do you want? Do you want people just do whatever they want with their property, and, you know, you've got people that, that are very finicky about their property, you've got other people that take care of their property to the best of their ability. Are those people supposed to just stand there and go, you know, I guess I don't matter, because this person doesn't want to clean up their property, or take care of their nuisances, or whatever? I mean, there has to be...
I'm asking why our attorney is doing this, it's...
Why are they taking care of this?
I mean, that one's been out there since two thousand sixteen. I mean, you're gonna check over it like the last week, is what we do to get some of that approved.
Yeah, and we've taken those steps, our attorney sent out, like I said, the letters, and some of the people respond, there's a process that takes a while, and chances are we won't approve it yet, but we'll try to get as much as we can back. I mean, if the next council wants to change direction and let people do whatever they want, go for it. I hope they don't. Anyway, that is the end of it, so we have a motion, you can adjourn, all in favor?